Good afternoon, everyone. We'll go ahead and get started since we have a very lengthy agenda today. It is September 6th, 2022. It is 2:00 PM, and this is our business meeting agenda. In attendance are Commissioners Brooks and Duncan, and Commissioner Philios is excused. I will go ahead and call for a moment of silence. All right, thank you. And now the Pledge of Allegiance. And Alicia, did you?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
All right, thank you. All right, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, but could you ask people on line to?
Yes, who's ever dialed in, can you just make sure you're on mute until your item comes up? Thank you. All right, we have approval of the minutes.
Yes, I move that we approve the meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, and consent calendar, which is items six through 20.
I move that we approve the consent calendar, items six through 20.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, and now we have the payables.
I move that we approve, excuse me, I dig it out here, the payables list. I know I've got it.
There's somewhere.
I got it, I got it. Payables list in the amount of $420,623.95 with jury panel payments in the amount of[213.65][213.65]$1,421.95.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, our first business meeting item, number 22, board approval request for the L-2 extensions tax year, says tax year 2022. So, okay, Alicia?
Seven taxing districts have requested extensions for their certified property tax budgets. The State Tax Commission has granted the board the power to give a seven working day extension via statute 63-8033. I'm requesting on their behalf to extend the deadline to September 9th, 2022. This will not affect the county's ability to meet our deadline to submit the calculated levy rates to the state.
Okay.
September 19th.
September 19th is the due date?
Yeah. It was the 9th, it's moving to the 19th.
Okay, great. I don't have a problem with that. Bill, do you have any questions? Okay.
I move that we approve the request for L-2 extensions to, what is the date?
The 19th.
The 19th, September 19th.
Second.
The tax year 2022.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, approve, number 23, approve support contract with XTR Value Services and Information Technology. Is there somebody on the line? Matt Snow on the line? Okay. It's a straightforward contract, I mean, if you're all right, Dave, I mean, I don't, I'm okay with it.
May I just state like what it's for?
Sure.
Just a brief description?
Sure. All right, so we'll go ahead and move forward with it. So this is a contract, annual fee of $36,000 payable and $3,000 monthly payments with two months, $6,000 due upon signing, and an additional $87,500 for consulting, software design and development, and DBA work due upon signing. So it's a maintenance and support agreement. Oh, hi, Matt. I was just giving all the details of your contract. You're up. Come on up.
Come on up.
I didn't read the terms as far as the dates or the hours.
The dates are October 1st to September 30th next year, and the hours are, there's two parts to it. There's the support, which was 200 hours, and some development for 50 hours.
Okay. All right, any questions?
No.
Okay.
I move that we approve the support contract with XTR Value Services and IT.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, item, oh, motion is carried. I think I'm supposed to say that every time or something's approved. All right, item 24, RRE Park Phase 4 Construction Change Order Number 2 with Stewart Contracting, Inc., Kimberly, I don't see Alexia here. So is Alexia or Kimberly on the phone?
This is Kim Riley, and I can present if Alexia is not available.
Thank you.
And also Melissa Cleveland from Wilt Comer is on the phone, too, if you need anything on this item.
All right.
Thanks, Melissa. So this is change order two for Stewart Contracting, Inc. for Phase 4 RB Park Project in the amount of $14,167.08. And as she stated, Melissa Cleveland, the Senior Project Manager from Wilt Comer, is available to answer any questions as to the details should you have them.
Okay. Melissa?
One detail, I was gonna say, one detail you might want to know is that we do still have money left in the grant after, we're not over budget.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions? All right.
I move that we approve the change order number two with Stewart Contracting and the RMO.
I'll second that.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Chair pro Tim Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion carries. Item 25, Grant Award ID 2022-011-00. And this is the Riverstone Transit Center Phase 2 Construction, and it's FTA of $500,000, and in-kind or cash match local jurisdiction, $125,000. So, Kim, is this you again?
Yes, this is the award that was granted from FTA 5307 funds. As many people are experiencing, we've had increased construction costs. So this is additional funding from our allocations that we've had through the years in order to pay the remainder of the contract should we need to pull from it.
All right, any questions?
No. I move that we approve the Grant Award 2022-011-00, Riverstone Transit Center Phase 2 Construction with the Federal Transit Administration, $500,000 cash and in-kind match jurisdictions, $125,000, and the Resource Management Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, motion carries. Item 26, Bus Stop Improvements, Change Order Number Two in the amount of $1,498.50 with Interstate Concrete. Kim?
Yes, this is Change Order Number Two with Interstate Concrete in the amount of $1,498.50. This is for unanticipated permit fees for the Panhandle Hellstop at C-15.
All right, and how does it look on the budget side?
Here again, construction has been, we are way over what we had anticipated. We started working on this four years ago, actually, when I first moved over to RMO. So we are, construction is pretty much complete on the improvements themselves, the shelter, we will seek additional funding. So we've got ample funding for this, and then if we put structures on the two sites, then that's going to be another award that we'll go out for.
Oh, gotcha, thank you. Any questions, Bill?
No. I move that we approve the Bus Stop Improvement Change Order Number Two for $1,498.50 with Interstate Concrete and Resource Management Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Item 27, Board Approval Request. It's for the School Facility Use Lakeland School District and Juvenile Diversion, Mr. Hall.
Yes, thank you.
You need to push your microphone, so people, thank you.
There you go. Sorry about that. So juvenile diversion uses the Lakeland Middle School to teach our drug and alcohol classes throughout the year. So this is just the sign of the use agreement for that. There's no fees associated with this.
Okay, any questions? All right, motion?
I move that we approve the request for school facilities use Lakeland School District and Juvenile Diversion.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. Motion passes. Item 28, Board Approval Request for the 2022 State Homeland Security Grant Program and Office of Emergency Management. Tiffany, are you on the line, or?
Yes, I am.
Hi.
So we are, hi, so Tiffany Westbrook for the record, we're seeking approval to submit our application for the 2022 SHSP Grant. We've been awarded $219,520.86, and these dollars will go towards projects that were selected by our Committee for Funding to help improve the capabilities throughout Cooney County.
Okay, so this is actually like a grant, the grant approval, not the application?
This is the approval to submit the application, yes.
Oh, okay, it's?
So I just got the email from Jody, yeah, sorry, we've got new staff over here, and I've been back for three weeks, so we will clean that stuff up.
Well, because number 29 is the?
That's another one, that's our Emergency Management Program, yep. So those are two separate programs.
Okay, so 28 should be an application and not the actual grant. Is that a problem?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine then. All right, any questions?
No.
Just change it to grant application.
Okay. I move that we approve the grant application for the 2022 State Homeland Grant, State Homeland Security Grant Program with the Office of Emergency Management.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes, thank you. Item 29, Board Approval Request for the 2022 Emergency Management Program Grant. And this is a grant, right, Tiffany?
Yes.
Thank you.
So we are seeking approval to submit the 2022 EMPG Grant. We have been awarded $112,811.80.
All right, do you have any questions, Bill?
So this is the same?
So it's a different program?
Yeah, I know it is.
Yeah.
But this is an approval for the submission or to accept?
Correct.
So this is another, oh, so neither one of these are awards?
Nope, they are, we are submitting the application.
Okay.
Okay, I move the, approve the application for the 2022 Emergency Management Program Grant, approval for the Office of Emergency Management.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, all right, motion passes. Item 30 is a proclamation, and Tiffany, do you want to go ahead and handle this one?
Yeah, so what we have before you is a resolution for Cooney County to declare September as Preparedness Month. September is National Preparedness Month. So throughout this month, we will be doing extra things promoting the county alerting system and holding various events to increase community preparedness. So the resolution before you is just to make that proclamation.
All right, any questions?
No, I move that we approve the request for a resolution for the National Preparedness Month and the Office of Emergency Management.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, all right, item 30 is approved. Item 31, Grant Use Agreement between OEM and KCFR, so that's Office of Emergency Management and Cooney County Fire and Rescue. Tiffany?
Yes, so this is a grant use agreement that we are required for outside agencies who are selected for funding under our SHSP Grant. This project will be funded by residual dollars left from our 2021 SHSP, and the benefiting agency is KCFR.
Okay, any questions?
No.
All right, motion?
I move that we approve the grant agreement between OEM and KCFR and the Emergency Management Office.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. All right, motion passes. Item 32, which is the Purchase Approval Request, K&amp;H Integrated Print Solutions for the August 30th election, and Mr. Gray?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, before you is a purchase approval request today for K&amp;H Integrated Print Solutions. There are vendor that we used for ballot printing, absentee mailing, and preparation for many of our last few elections now, including the August 30th one. It is budgeted, it just came over the $10,000 limit, so that's why I'm in front of you today.
Thank you. Any questions? All right.
I move that we approve the request for K&amp;H Integrated Print Solutions dated August 30th, 2022, for school elections.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. All right, item is approved. And item 33, FY23 Indigent Defense Financial Assistance Agreement and Addendum Letter. Ms. Taylor, please.
Good afternoon. We applied for the Public Defense Commission, the state grant funding to assist us in providing indigent defense, and that award letter has come through. That requires the signature of the clerk, and I believe Jim Brandon has signed already, and now agreement with the Commissioners. There is also a letter that, in cooperation with a couple of other parties, we've collected information and presented to the Commissioners for consideration, and further, I guess, information on that part as well.
Okay, and Bill, I have the letter right here, so if you're comfortable with, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just, yeah, okay.
Okay, yeah, so?
I've seen it.
Okay, any questions?
No, no questions.
Good.
I move that we approve the FY23 Indigent Defense Financial Assistance Agreement and Addendum Letter.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, so motion passes, and I will go ahead and sign. So, Anne, if you're all right taking this upstairs and getting the copy?
I actually read it.
Okay. Item 34, this is Grant Correspondence, well, I guess it's grant number 3-160010-54-2022, and it's a Notice to Proceed, and the FAA portion is $470,031, cash match $26,113. And Stephen?
Commissioner, Stephen Kerrigan for the record, this is a Notice to Proceed with Calvaco Electrical in order for them to start work next week. It's once again the amount of $470,031, with our match of, with 5% match from the state is $26,113. The state has indicated at this point it is going to match 5% of the grant, however, that could possibly change down to 2.5%. We have not received official word yet, but they've indicated it will be 5%.
Okay. Any questions?
I move, I move that we, excuse me, approve the Notice to Proceed with grant number 3-16-0010-54-2022 with the Federal Aviation Administration. That includes the cash for $470,031, and that includes a cash match of $26,113.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, all right, item 34 has been approved. And now item 35, and this is Grant Certifications for AIP 056 and 057, and it is FAA portion is $961,764, cash match $80,146.50. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen Kerrigan for the record, this is actually, we missed one, it also includes an unnamed grant at this time for the certifications for that. It's anticipated that this will be 58, but it's 56, 57, and estimated to be 58 for those certifications. It's listed in the memo as that. This does, the dollar amounts are incorrect because it only is the grant 56. This will actually be a higher dollar amount for all three grants. It'll cover the full amount with that, and that has to do with just how the system works now. So we didn't.
And I think what he's referring to is?
You're, Jelena, you're, thank you.
Sorry. What he's referring to is the on-base system for agendizing it, ultimately that, like he said, the grant amounts are for only one of the grants mentioned, but really, I don't know that it's necessary because it's just certain assurances anyway.
Yeah.
Right, right, we're not approving grants for 58, so do you have a problem with that? Okay, perfect.
And the advance search are notifications that you're going to be complete items that are in grants already.
Okay, any questions?
You make the motion, I'm, between my hearing and the confusion, I'm thoroughly confused.
Yeah, it's, yeah. All right, I move that we approve the grant certifications for AIPs 56, 57, and 58.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, all right, item 35 passes.
That was simple.
I know. All right, well, wait till we get to 38 and 39, we can complicate it again. Item 36 is a lease addendum, AAL 2021-1400, which is an increase of square footage for North Idaho Hangar Group LLC. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen Kerrigan for the record, this is an increase of approximately 4,800 square feet with an increase of approximately $1,288 per year. They requested to increase the size due to allowing for slightly larger hangar development on the north side. We were able to accommodate that.
Okay. Any questions?
I move that we approve lease addendum, AAL 2021-1400, to increase the square footage for North Idaho Hangar Group LLC.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, and so item 36 passes, and this is item 37, and it's a memo of, or memorandum of acknowledgement for leasing property access agreement at the airport. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen Kerrigan for the record, this is a memo acknowledging a leased property agreement between CDA Northwest and CCM Investments. This allows for access clearance and easement through an individual's leasehold to another individual's leasehold. CDA Northwest reached out, negotiated the agreement, and will be leasing an additional space, which acceptance of this memo will allow us to lease an approximately additional $3,800 worth of lease space that we would not have been able to otherwise.
Okay. Any questions?
No. I move to approve, we approve a request memo for acknowledgement for lessy property access agreement at the airport.
And I'll just add Parties of CDA Northwest and CCM Investments. Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye. All right, item 37 passes, and now we're at item 38, and this is Grant Agreement 3-16-0010-05622, and it's for an approval of a grant, FAA's portion $961,764, cash match $80,146.50. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen Kerrigan for the record, this is a grant acceptance for the SRE Building. It's in the amount of $961,764, and our match is $80,146.50. This is at 5%. Once again, the state has indicated that they will match 5% for this grant again, and this is just accepting that grant.
Can I, can I comment really quick? Stephen, just so you know, that cash match at the $80,000, that's actually at 7.5%.
It was at 7.5%?
Yeah, 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 just so you know. And so the state portion, if they do the 7.5 and the 2.5, the state portion will be about $26,700. So, just so you know, it wasn't at 5%.
Right, but they have a chance to do it at 5%, which means our 80% would go, or $80,000 would go down.
$80,000, yep. And then, once again, they've indicated that they are doing 5% across the board this year.
Okay, and then with this, we already have the contractor on board, so then we'll get a notice to proceed?
Yep, as soon as we accept these two grants, we will get a notice to proceed probably within the next two or three weeks.
Okay. And is there anything else, Jelena, that needed to be? We're good? Okay?
I move that we approve Grant Agreement 3-16-0010-056-2022 with the Federal Aviation Administration in the amount of $961,764 with a cash match of approximately $80,000.
Second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye, all right, grant agreement is approved. And number 39, this is Grant Agreement 3-16-0010-057-2022. And then this one is for FAA's portion $295,000, cash match $24,583.50. Stephen?
Commissioner, once again, this is our bill money, our BIL money. This is $295,000 for cash match of $24,583.50. This also looks like it's at 7.5%. Once again, the state can possibly go down or up to 5%. This is, as the grant describes it, this is Phase 3. As we stated this, we expect an additional phase next year of our bill money of $790,000 approximately to cover the remaining amount of the SRE building.
Okay. The amounts are a little bit different. Can you explain anything in that?
Which section, Commissioner?
The email from Jody had said it was 327?
Oh, that's the, that's the full amount of the grant.
Oh, okay.
What is stated on the agenda is the FAA portion and then the cash match, and then there's a difference, which is what the state is committed, well, not fully committed to, but we anticipate, and like he said, the state portion is the 2.5%, so that's the difference of, what is it, $8,195?
Okay, so, because the, yeah, number 38 was not added together, but 39 was, so there you can see my confusion.
Yeah, yeah. So the numbers are correct-ish if they do 7.5 and 2.5.
Actually, Commissioners, the number listed is, 38 is the dollar amount the FAA is awarding.
Is the 295?
Right.
No, 38, the 96174, that is the grant total that the FAA is awarding.
Right, right.
And that appears to be a misunderstanding from grant management. They actually awarded $200,000 more in Grant 57, or 56, excuse me, and then 29, 57 is just 295,000 is their allocation for that.
Yeah, I, it's, I think it was a miss, Stephen, you're right. I think it's, it was just typed up wrong from Jody.
Yes.
Okay.
But it's, it's consistent, 38 and 39 are consistently, it's the FAA portion and then the match portion, so, yes.
All right, thank you for the clarification, Anne?
I move that we approve Grant Number 3-16-00-10-57-2022, excuse me, approval of a grant from the Federal Aviation Commission Administration in the amount of $295,000 with a cash match of $24,000. Administration in the amount of $295,000 with a cash match of $24,583.50.
And I'll second that.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye, thank you, and that motion was approved. Thanks Stephen for getting us through that, uh-huh.
One point of clarification with Commissioner Philios gone, we're asking the FAA who's signing them?
And, and I have them right here.
You have them?
I, I literally can sign them, like...
We weren't sure if you had gotten them or not, so we were asking for clarification from the FAA.
Yeah, I have both, so if you're okay, I'll sign both of them.
That works, that's all, we wanted to make sure that somebody had got them besides Chris.
Yep, I got them both, so I'll do that. All right, item forty, which is Board Approval Request. This is the 2022 ballot for Capitol Crimes Defense Fund, and this is for the at-large board member with the Idaho Association of Counties. I am the District One Representative, and none of the other seats were contested but the at-large seat, and so there are three names that were put forward. Bill, I didn't know if you had a preference. The gentleman who is doing it now is from, I got it marked in my book here. Sorry. Cassia County. So if you're okay with him continuing, then I will go ahead and do that, so...
Make the motion.
Yes, I will do that. So I move that we vote for Bob Kunaugh, K-U-N-A-U, for the at-large board member for the Capitol Crimes Defense Fund, Idaho Association of Counties.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan.
Aye. All right, that motion passes, and then item forty-one is our pending, status pending list, and there's only one item, our facilities expansion, and we're just in kind of legal reviewing a proposed contract. We got to get the contract straight first before we start negotiating for the money, so that's kind of where we're at right now. And our last item is public comment. Nobody, anybody on the telephone, public comment? All right, hearing none, that was the longest, shortest meeting that we've had.
Oh, wait.
Oh, oh, please come up. Yes, please.
This is a first...
Okay. So you can go ahead and...
So we can all hear you.
Yep, push that button. Uh-huh, and you can just leave it right there, and then state your name, just for the record.
My name is Diane Hahnemichael, my husband is Chris Hahnemichael, and we're here because of a newspaper article that came out from the Idaho Tribune, and we don't know if you people are aware of it or not.
It's the Wath Hospital, Cooney County Hospital.
Yeah, I'm vaguely familiar.
This reads, "Cooney County Health Crisis, North Idaho Hospital on the Brink of Financial Collapse Eyes Anti-Democratic Theft of Public Property." They take a picture of the hospital, and then it's also, if you want to see, says "They are going to steal our hospital."
What, what comment do you have for the Board of Commissioners?
It's about the trustees.
Exactly. We want to know if you're aware of this.
The financial trouble that the county or the hospital is in. Are you guys aware of it, of the trustees?
I'm not, but this is not a question of the House recession.
Right, it's just for public comment, so if you have something to...
Our public comment is that we would like our county officials to get together, and we're requesting a full inspection and investigation of what's going on at Cooney Hospital. We all know through the health crisis...
The financial part of it.
Well, it sounds to me, as is stated in this article, that says that, add, to add to the financial instability of the hospital, they have been spending hundreds of millions of dollars on upgrades, everything from the, the building expansion, their eastern wing, as well as their new data sharing, big tech epic health tracking system, which is of course a part of its Agenda 2030 vision. Have you heard of that?
Twenty thirty, I have.
Okay. Which according to NESS calls for one connection, connected team boldly transforming the healthcare experience to become a premier medical destination. Add, and Cooney Health has indeed been working very hard on becoming more interconnected. One of these connections, they recently unveiled is their behavioral health partnership with a Tacoma-based company called Multicare, which is a partner with the Human Rights Campaign, a pro-abortion, pro-transgender, George Soros-linked activist group, and committed to diversity in healthcare. They also offer gender-affirming care to their patients and even run a gender-affirming children's clinic at Mary Bridge Children's Hospital, according to their website. But this board is looking to recognize the hospital not as a public entity anymore. The taxpayers' money is in that hospital, and they're stating that the elected Board of Trustees, but as a nonprofit 501, three foundation with an appointed Board of Trustees that will disregard the will of the people and instead do what is the best interest of the hospital.
In their opinion?
In their opinion. I just want to be sure.
What was the source for this information?
The Idaho Tribune.
Okay, where does that come from?
Well...
Is it...
Can I comment really quick, not to add fuel to any fire, but just to clarify, the hospital does not receive taxpayer funds, just so you're aware, they do not levy. So taxes paid do not get paid to the hospital, just so you're aware.
Sure.
Isn't part of the property tax go to the hospital?
No.
It's, it's all done...
It's actually fee and donation funded.
I would still like a copy of the article.
But just so you're aware, they are, they are a tax district, but they do not levy.
Absolutely, I, I mean, this is just...
I want to read it.
Sure.
Yep.
Yeah, if you could send the link to the Commissioners or, you know, give us a copy it or whatever, that would be, that'd be helpful, so...
You know, there has just been, I mean, we've left Cooney because of the care. The nurses, the doctors left because of the mandates, the mandates on the, wearing the mask, the vaccine mandates. They've lost a lot of good doctors, a lot of nurses, and amongst that, they've also lost a lot of patients.
I also think you should make these comments to the Board of Cooney. That's...
Yes.
Nowadays, is there a meeting this afternoon or is it this evening?
Yeah, I don't know when the meeting is, you'll have to look it up on the website, so...
Right.
Yeah.
Well, the disinformation of the time of the meetings that is put into the cordillane press, which we don't read, I just got that from a neighbor, that it was at six o'clock tonight, but when we investigated it online today, it said it was at noon today.
Yeah, I'm, I don't know how to help you there. I know, but...
People are getting frustrated.
Unfortunately, we're not the body that has the answers, so...
According to this article, this is the body that makes a lot of the decision-making when it comes to the vote of the people. In other words...
Not regarding the hospital.
Who's, who appoints the people that are on the Board of Trustees?
So they're elected, directly elected, and they'll be, I think it's next May is the next election.
This right here says, "Another example can be found in the optional forms of government hearings last year when County Commissioner Chris Philios lamented how the voters of Cooney County elect unqualified people to positions of power, favoring instead the change of form of our local government, removing our ability to elect our sheriff, and instead allowing for this appointment of the state-controlled commissar, whatever that is, that will go along with these elitist vision for the future."
Yeah, the Commissioners, yeah, the Commissioners have nothing to do with the hospital board. We have zero authority in that matter.
And it's old news.
What do you mean it's old news?
Commission, that's all over.
The optional forms of government, is that true?
There was no change in it.
No, okay, there was no change in that. We came to that meeting...
No, so it's, so it's a separate issue, they're two separate issues, so...
How that could have gotten changed.
I would like to talk with you and move into it.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Yeah, well, the people are aware, and we're watching, and we're...
Sure.
I'm telling you, the time has come for people to stand up and find out what these things are about, what's happening in our, in our, where we live in our communities.
Sure.
The accountability has to be there for some people, but we just don't want decisions made for us. We, the people paying taxes, need to make decisions for our families.
Sure, sure. Thank you for coming today.
You bet.
All right, any other public comment? And it's two thirty-nine, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you, folks.